Can I ask everyone, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Good morning and welcome, everybody. We'll start out with a public comment on the agenda and on agenda items. Go ahead.
Chairman Hall, and Vice Chair Darrow, and Commissioner McNamara, my name is Bob Anderson. I'm representing the residents from Lake Marge and Lake Sophia. And I thank you, first of all, for hearing us and giving us an audience. In researching the scope of the county commissioner's office of responsibility, I found four areas that we feel you may be able to help us with. And that is our purpose of being here today. We are desperately looking for some help. Lake Marge and Lake Sophia are being drained by order of the Department of Environmental Protection in the next few weeks. The property owners of the lakes have been derelict in maintaining the dams and keeping up with the dam safety regulations, inspections, and many other issues since 2003. The DEP has been negligent in enforcing the law and taking action that would have fixed or addressed these issues some time ago, we believe. Now, 22 years after the problem was identified, and I have the letters to identify those, the DEP is finally forcing the owner to comply. This delay in enforcing the laws of Pennsylvania, we believe, added to the deterioration of the dams and to make them, along with their owners, culpable and possibly liable for draining of our lakes. But that's really not what we're here for. I reached out to Jonathan Fritz, our Pennsylvania State Representative. He offered no help. Lisa Baker, our Pennsylvania State Representative, they indicated they would get back to me and still waiting on a response. Josh Shapiro, our governor, made numerous calls to the governor's office, and they weren't even willing to address it or interested in helping us at all. Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission, they were not willing to help. Susquehanna County Conservation District, who offered no help. We fully understand that these are private lakes. However, we are residents and taxpayers of Susquehanna County and would like you to consider, if possible, for you to help us in one of these areas. And we feel that are under your umbrella of responsibility. The four areas were listed under the county commissioner's website when I did some research. And the first one is listed was representing county interest, serving as the county's voice at the state and federal level. The draining of the lakes, long with causing an eyesore, will create a new echo environment. The DEP, who I believe own the waters and the aquatic life in the lakes, have told us that they are not willing to relocate or try to save any of the hundreds of thousands of species that are in these, the fish, the turtles, the frogs, and so on. They are going to let them suffer and die and decay. As residents living on these decayed swamp pits, we will be subject to that rotting flesh and stench. These smells will inevitably bring in predators like the bear, eagles, crows, coyotes, fox, raccoons. They all eat on these fish. And they will, in turn, be infesting our properties. We will not be able to enjoy our own backyards or let our children and grandchildren be outdoors for fear of predator attacks. And of course, with disease, rabies, mosquitoes, and simply the smells that we are going to incur are devastating to us. Also, once the lakes are drained and taken down to the original stream bed, that's what they have to do, to stream bed waterways, those waters will then continue to flow through this diseased decay and flow down into the streams and the creeks and rivers of Susquehanna County for years to come. Number two, the assessment of people and property was under your umbrella overseeing the assessment of property for tax purposes. We have been told that our property values will decrease up to 50% after the lakes are drained. We will need your help to have our properties reevaluated if or when the lakes are drained, when we are living on swamps, obviously, other than lakefront property. Number three, planning and development. And this is listed as working with the planning commission to guide the county's long-term development. A negative to consider here, the draining of the lakes will be fiscally harmful to the tax rules of Susquehanna County. Our county will incur tax revenue loss due to the devaluation of the homes and the properties around the lake. We would like for you to consider to help us in some way to put off or to save these lakes for environmental benefits for all the aquatic animals, as well as the, we have bald eagles that nest at our lakes, osprey, blue and green cranes, geese, ducks, and many other animals that currently use the lakes. We offer public access, even though they're private. Many people from our county and around our area come and use the lakes to fish and boat on. Number four, providing a certain local services and facilities. And the heading was ensuring the provision of essential services and facilities on a countywide basis. We feel that we should be entitled as Susquehanna County residents to be able to live in a safe, non-toxic environment, which will be, actually be created by the very department who is sworn to provide it by its very name, the Department of Environmental Protection. These same people who have to have a fishing license and make sure that everything, you don't harm a nesting area of various animals, do not care about the very fish and the aquatic animals that are in our lake. We humbly thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration this morning.
Well, first of all, I mean, the commissioners, all of us, you know, are saddened to hear that, you know, it's come to the situation where these lakes are going to get drained. Unfortunately, you know, it's not the first time DEP has done this. They've done it in Wayne County. They've drained lakes over there. We know that there are several lakes in this county that are being targeted by DEP. And it's all because the dam owners or lake owners will not take into the necessary repairs to the dams to keep them in place. Unfortunately, they're private property. They're owned by private individuals, and they have the rights to do what they wish to do. What we can do, what we will do is, even though it's a state agency, DEP is a state agency, they don't fall under us. Believe me, they don't work with us very well, but we will reach out to them and do what we can to try and at least see what we can do to solicit conversations, to see what can be done, if anything can be done, to delay or to figure out a different way to address this. So, you know, that we will do. You know, that's one thing we can do as commissioners. We can advocate. Even though we don't have any authority over them, we can still advocate to try and get something done. Your second thing that you talked about was the assessment, by all means. If it gets to the worst situation where it does get drained, you by all right have the right to file an appeal with the assessment office. They'll come out and reassess your properties, which will then reduce the value of your property. As far as the planning and development, our planning and development through our SALVO, there's no jurisdiction for anything to happen there. We do realize that there is an economic loss. It is a loss to the taxpayers in the county, as well as a loss to possible tourism and everything else that goes with it. Again, this all falls back to us trying to advocate with DEP to see what can be done. We've reached out to them on other projects. Sometimes we're successful, but most of the time we're not. But, you know, I can tell you that the three of us will reach out to DEP and do what we can with them. But again, they're state agencies, and basically, the state areas should be addressing those areas with them. So, you know, that's all we can do for you. You know, I would recommend to all of you that have purchased land around that lake with the idea that you're going to have a lake in your front yard, that you talk to your solicitor and see what your solicitor can do. But again, we cannot force that property owner to do anything, so.
Even if you might help, the timing of this, I spoke to the person that has been contracted to start to drain the lakes, and he indicated to me it might be within the next week or two weeks, so.
Don't give us a lot of time, does it?
It, or for us. And which couldn't be a worse time for us, so the decay would be in the heat of the summer instead of at wintertime, maybe, when it wouldn't be so horrible. We understand, and we're looking for a miracle. I'm a Christian man. I believe in God, and he can do anything. But any help that you can give us in any way would be appreciated. I do have copies of this for all three of you, if you would like.
I mean, you know, listen, I don't, you know, I don't know if we could perform a miracle for you.
But we'll do our best.
But we'll do our best to try and do something, at least, to at least make sure, you know, that there's more voices behind this and that something gets done, because, you know, this needs to be a wake-up call for everybody. I mean, Bel Air Lake is another one that's in serious trouble. So, again, if the, if the people that own these properties that have made some good financial gains from developing it and now have made that decision, you know, listen, I'm not an attorney, and I'm not trying to give you legal advice, but I surely would be talking to my solicitor about that, so. And I think that's what you need to be doing. And, you know, that's the other thing. If you all formed together, maybe you could, you know, get a solicitor to get an injunction put in place to stop it for right now until at least it can be heard.
I have spoke to at least six attorneys. No one wants to get involved with the DEP.
So with that, I would invite the commissioners to, as you talk to these individuals that you're going to talk to, that you also please come back to, you know who I am, I know them too, you know who I am, and you know, Bob, please come back to us with any thoughts that you may get back to us as to how to resolve, if this does happen, what we need to do going forward, because there is an opportunity to fix this within five years in some manner. And we have some, at least I have some thoughts as to how to do that. But if, we're open to hearing from you as to what you're hearing from the people that you're going to talk to, as to what may be a solution going forward.
Well, but I'm confused, because you're saying you got five years, but you're telling me it's going to be drained in a week or two.
It's going to be drained, and the DEP said that, once it's drained, you have the right, somebody, the owners, have the right to develop that back into a lake. Once everything is fixed, you have five years to do that. After that five-year grace period, it all starts all over. New permitting has to be done and so forth, and now you don't even know if you can have a lake. Well, the one thing that DEP has said, that if you guys want, if you guys want to spend a million and a half out of your own pockets and get the property, and, you know, there's only five people on our lakes, three of us are retired, I can't, we can't afford $700,000 to, you know.
We're going to need some guidance.
So, we do have five years.
And I don't know where you look for attorneys, whether you just did locally.
Wilkes-...
You may have to go to Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, or York, or something like that, and give them some of the bigger firms. You know, people that have, that have addressed issues like this before.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. Even though this is private property, isn't there some law that private property can be seized for the public good?
Well, yeah, but you're not going to get any judge to rule to say, we're going to allow you to seize this land. Not going to happen. Barely can get that done when we need to put a road in or something else.
You guys up front, they're known to me pretty well, and some of you people know me here, too. I don't live on either one of those lakes. I live in Chillicothe. However, I moved there when I got out of the Marine Corps in 1962, the Quaker Lake, and I live in Chillicothe now. I remember when those lakes were built, and I know who built them. And it was, all these years with all these floods and the high waters, these dams, and especially the one on Lake Marge, is still intact, and the spillway there is solid stone. The whole darn mountain behind it is almost solid stone. And I know I talked to these people when I went to one of their meetings, and, well, we don't believe for sure that that spillway is solid stone. We have to drill through it. Whether it is, it's solid stone, and it's never moved, it's still the same width it always was, and it works. Lake Sophia does need a little bit of work on it, but not bad. But there is no reason whatsoever, these dams have withstand all these floods and the high waters, all these years, 60-some years, they're still intact. Why drain them? It doesn't make any sense to me at all, spending taxpayers' money for nothing. It's stupid. You know, Mr. Hall, I, I'm pretty outspoken, and when I believe things, I stand up for it.
Well, listen, this county has close to 100, if not more than 100, lakes in this county. And, you know, it's a huge concern to all of us, because those lakes do bring in a lot of people, visitors to our area. And, you know, it's a major concern for all of us. You know, unfortunately, you know, we're the fly on the end of the dog's tail.
I understand.
That's getting whipped around. You know, if we had the authority to do things, we'd do things. But the problem is, is, you know, this is an agency, it's a state agency, DEP, and they have their regulations, and they're governed by the state. And, you know, we have no authority over them. We're at their mercy, just like you are. Believe me, you know, the nightmare we went through at the Public Safety Center, having to design three different septic systems before they finally picked one? And then after we spent close to a million dollars designing one, they picked one of the first ones we did. So, you know, believe me, nobody understands the pain more than we do. And, you know, it's unfortunate, and, you know, I know Mr. Fritz, you know, he dealt with the issue over in Wayne County when they drained one of the lakes over there. And, you know, alls we can do is, and what we will do, as I said, we'll reach out to DEP to try and have a conversation, to see what can be done, if anything can be done, or if we're way past that, and we'll let you know what we find out.
Sir, have you had any environmental impact studies done? Because if you've got nesting eagles and osprey and some other nesting birds there, right now, they're dependent on feeding birds in the nests. You might buy yourself weeks for anything.
I can address that as well.
Yeah, they're not, they're not as federally protected as they were, but still, it might buy you a little bit of time to see what's nesting at your area and see if you can buy a little time.
So I can address the eagle thing, too. I did actually talk to the game commissioner. With a lot of, like, talk to the county, talk to the state, talk to the county, duck and dork, finally talked to the game commissioner, who said, doesn't matter, because we do have a pair of nesting eagles. I said, I don't know if there's any hatchlings, but I know there's a male and a female. And they said, they can fly very far to find food, so nothing we can do. So there's the answer to that, they said, again, no. What I would like to reiterate, if you could even delay this a bit, to, like, late fall or whatever, I have my grandchildren all summer long, and I will have be, if they, if and when they drain Marge, it's going to run adjacent to my property. I live right next door to it. So it's going to, all that water and rotting fish and snakes and turtles and everything is going to be my next-door neighbor. So I really would rather not have that be part of my summer. And if we can delay it even, and that would maybe give some people some time, too, to make some more calls in not two weeks, that would be a very big help.
Have you got, do you have people, contacts at DEP you've been talking with?
Curtis Brown.
And where is he out of? Is he out of Wilkes-Barre or Harrisburg?
No, Harrisburg. Duke Adams. And there's another one that's in between those two, but I never get a response from him.
All right. Well, we'll reach out, see what we can do.
Are you in direct contact with Representative Fritz? Do you have a relationship with him? Because he won't respond to, if you're saying the state agency should be coming from a state representative, would it be better received coming from him?
Well, yeah, I think that, you know, I'll reach out to Fritz, I'll reach out to Baker and both of them, and see what they can do to get on board, to try and at least get this thing delayed, and then maybe find a miracle for you.
Do you think Washington would be able to help?
Why are you smiling?
They can't even help themselves. All right. So, you know, that's what we'll, we'll see what we can do. And what's your, what's your, what's your name, your name on here?
I had, I.
Contact information.
I think I did, but maybe it's, it's Bob Anderson. My cell phone number, 607.
Yep.
422.
Yep.
9300.
All right. We'll get back to you. Thank you all for coming. We'll do what we can to help. I can't guarantee you anything, but again, I think your strong suit is if you can find an attorney, that's, you know, there's, there's conservation attorneys out there that I would think would jump all over this, so. But you're not going to find them in this county, so. All right. You guys can leave, you don't have to stay.
Best of luck.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
I want you to come out and walk on water.
Believe me, the last thing I'd be able to do is walk on water.
To know what he was referring to, our spillway, he was spending every seven years in it, it's 100-foot bedrock. They want us to blow up the bedrock to put in concrete. Concrete is on the other one that has now failed.
Right.
Right, so it makes some sense.
So they want us to blow it, it's hurricane, put in something that's going to fail. That's what we were saying.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll call the meeting back to order now, and we'll move on. Is there any other public comment or non-agenda items?
Yeah, let's get around here, let's get it over with.
Oh, you did?
You left?
Okay.
All right, well, then we'll move on. Good job. All right, hearing nothing more on public comment, can I get a motion to close public comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item two.
I'll make a motion to approve of that.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve item two, approve the minutes of May 14th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item three.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, to reset the commissioner's meeting on the SALVO board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so move to the SALVO board. Any public comments on the SALVO board? Hearing none, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item two.
I'll make a motion for item two.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve item two, approve the minutes of May 14th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried. Item number three.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, to eliminate the part-time, non-union position of administrative assistant to Chief Probation Officer, grants PCCD reporting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item four.
I'll make a motion for item four.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, to approve item four, create four part-time, non-union positions, County Detective Task Force, $20 per hour effective May 28, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item five.
Motion to approve.
I will second it.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, to approve item five, to add to the County Detective Task Force job title duties to three deputy sheriff positions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item six.
I'll make a motion for item six.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, to approve item six, add County Detective Task Force job titles and duties to the chief deputy sheriff position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item seven.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, close the SALVO board, return to the commissioner's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are back to the commissioner's meeting at 9:25. Item number four.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second it.
A motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve item four, approve paying the bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item five.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, approve item five, approve all the seminar requests and travel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item number six.
I'll make a motion for item six.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve item six, approve entering into memorandum of understanding between Susquehanna County Services of Children Youth and Blue Ridge School District for a transportation procedures agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item seven.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, approve item seven, approve entering into service agreement with Eaton Corporation for services and maintenance, onsite emergency response for the UPS Public Safety. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item eight.
I'll make a motion for item eight.
And I'll second it.
A motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve item eight, approve entering in an agreement with Matrosa School District for printing and mailing of school district's tax bills, notices, and letters at a cost of 20 cents per bill to the school district. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item number nine.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, to enter into memorandum of understanding with the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts, ALPC, for a $10,000 grant for treatment court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 10.
I will make a motion for item 10.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, in an agreement between Susquehanna County, Susquehanna County Children Youth Services and Avanco International for upgrades to child accounting and profile systems caps. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 11.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, approve item 11, to amend the Susquehanna County Jail Vending Agreement with DSI ITI Viapath. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 12.
I'll make a motion for item 12.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve item 12, into agreement with Viapath for the Funder Management System Maintenance Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 13.
Motion to approve. I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, approve the additional responsibilities, part-time IT, to remove the additional responsive, part-time IT application support training from the GIS Technician Job Description. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. 14.
I'll make a motion for item 14.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve the hiring of Vivian Boyer at Tonkant, the open, full-time union position of caseworker one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 15.
A motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrow, approve item 15, except for the resignation and retirement of James Hawley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 16.
I'll make a motion for item 16.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Darrow, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve item 16, ratify and approve the termination of Javier Valentin from the position of full-time telecommunicator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 17.
A motion to approve, second.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrell, approve item seventeen, ratify and acknowledge termination of Jeffrey Schumaker from the position of part-time adult probation administrative assistant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so carried, item eighteen.
I'll make a motion for item eighteen.
And I'll second it.
A motion by Commissioner Darrell, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve item eighteen, to add the county detective task force to the job title of the following employees, all effective May twenty-eighth, so stated and so provided. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so carried, item nineteen.
A motion to approve, second.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrell, approve item nineteen, acknowledge the hiring of the following to the open part-time, non-union positions of part-time task force at twenty dollars per hour, effective June twelfth, as so stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so carried, item twenty.
I'll make a motion for item twenty.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Darrell, second by Commissioner McNamara, to approve item twenty, now transfer Greg Declan, position of school resource officer, to the open part-time, non-union position of county detective task force, effective June first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so carried. Item twenty-one is on hold, I'm asking for a motion to table.
Motion to table, second.
A motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrell, to table item twenty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so carried, item number twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Darrell, second by Commissioner McNamara, to approve item twenty-two, to approve proclamation twenty-five dash twenty-three proclaiming June second through the eighth as Museum Week in Susquehanna County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, do we have anybody here from the museum? If I could, I'll get your. So let's give you this first.
Can we get a photo now or later?
Let me get your shaking your hand first, bud. So, thank you both very much, I guess we can get together right now. Get this done.
Do you want to be in the picture?
No.
Okay. You're supporting them. All right, everybody smile on three, one, two, three.
All right. Would you guys like to say a couple words?
We just appreciate the recognition. We've got about, believe, or not about fifteen historic sites, historic museums, and other places in this county, and just thousands of people that work really hard in preserving our history. So I appreciate that you're recognizing us, and at least across the street. We'll do something fun for, for the week, once we have steps. October fourth, we are moved together to have a history trail on one day, where all of us will be open from ten to four, every single historical site in, in the county, just about, so.
Awesome.
We welcome you to that, and again, thank you for, for supporting us, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, you guys do a great job, and we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
That's gracious.
Sort of related to that too, I'll drop one of these off. This is our impending next event, the Veterans Roll Call here on the Green, June fourteenth.
Yeah.
I brought some of you along, if anyone else would like one. We're beating the bushes for veterans, and if you know any, let them know if you are one. I know Commissioner McNamara is, so we expect to see you there that day.
Thank you.
The other two commissioners, I don't know if you're veterans, but we expect to see you if you are, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number twenty-three.
A motion to approve, second.
Motion by Commissioner McNamara, second by Commissioner Darrell, approve item twenty-three, to approve proclamation twenty-five, twenty-four, proclaiming June ninth through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, as Child Welfare Professionals Appreciation Week in Susquehanna County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we have some of our workers from our children's youth here today. We'd like to give this to one of you or all of you to take. How about that? He's going to push you up there. So, listen, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
We know that your job is not an easy job, it's not a fun job all the time. We hope that, you know, you get a little fun now and then, but we know that you're dealing with situations when things are at their worst, and we do appreciate all that you do and the hard work that you do. We know that it's a hard job and very difficult emotionally, and it has a lot of stress. So, we want to thank all of you, and if you'd like to say a few words.
We do appreciate this, and we brought up, I've been here twenty-one years, we've got a rank of years where, we have our two newbies in the corner, and we train well, and we work hard, and I would hold our agency up to all of them. We do the best job we can to keep the county kids safe, and I think we do a pretty darn good job doing it, and we appreciate being appreciated, and we'll continue to try to do our best to keep kids safe.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, thank all of you. Item number twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Darrell, second by Commissioner McNamara, approve item twenty-four, close the commissioners' meeting at nine thirty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are closed. Thank you everybody for coming.
Thank you.